Where do you go?
All right, we'll call this meeting to order, a regular session of the Oak Ridge City Council or at the Oak Ridge City Hall. The time is six P M. And the first order of business is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councillor Coker?
He'll be slightly delayed, but we expect her here.
Okay. Councillor Bjornson?
Excuse.
Councillor Tarmann?
Excuse.
Councillor Brewer?
Here.
Mayor Ketchum?
Here.
Councillor Kenyon?
Here.
Councillor Hollitt?
Here.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Next is additions, corrections, adjustments to the agenda. James, anything? No? Any councillors having any recommended adjustments? Okay. Um, James, do you expect an action item out of the executive session within public session?
I'm hoping.
Okay, we'll leave it the way it is. All right. Public comment, we'll start in the room, any public comment in the room? Any public comment online? Well, crowd, all right, moving on to mayor comments, announcements, proclamations. Just to make everyone aware, the teams, the incident management teams have swapped out, it's now Eastern Area Team. Second round here, they were before last, so they're back for more. They took over last night at eighteen hundred, I believe, six o'clock. And I'll be there, they'll be there for at least two weeks, I would think. Next is the city was awarded the Community Renewable Energy Construction Grant. That is a grant targeted for the Willamette Activity Center to install solar on the roof as we put it on. We went through a feasibility study and that went well, so this, we applied for this actual construction grant. And it will be in the amount roughly of three hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, so. That's a lot of money to put solar on a roof and including hopefully get some storage out of it too, so. Good news for the Willamette Activity Center. Next is the Mountain Town Throwdown, a disc golf tournament, and that's going to be up at Willamette Pass, pre-admission. Live entertainment, local vendors, and that is September twentieth through the twenty-second. All weekend, so be fun to get up there. Any, moving on to council comments, announcements, any councillors have any comments, announcements? All right, nothing heard. Item eight is the consent agenda, eight point one minutes from previous city council meeting on nine, five, twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second? We should maybe by councillor Kane, second by councillor Hollitt, anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item nine is appointments, there are none tonight. Item ten is business from the city council, ten point one FEMA letter of concern, James?
Mayor councils, this is just kind of a little bit more introductory. Some of the things we're working, trying to work through, the first issue of concern was FEMA. As recently done some map updates for Central Lake area and sort of it is a few of those. And from my math and experience, we have some areas that are definitely concerned. And put it in the back, it shows an ozone, and it shows a no record. So nonetheless, I'm trying to work with FEMA to address that, they have other communities, but for whatever reason, we're not one of them. And second concern is actually the larger one for me is the pick of free implementation of climate measures. The short of it is as to the major species act and a lawsuit to NFIP National Floodwater Insurance Program. And FEMA, and they are ruling out some new measures that I think are extremely restrictive. We have three choices to choose from, either just flat out say no development floodplain zone. Adopt them all ordinance, or we require a unit of development have a habitat assessment. On Tuesday night, by admission myself, we know we have a bad assessment, next plan is to go over the code amendment. Yeah, which those two are more likely to recommend. And if anybody cares to follow along with those, if you go to the calendar dated fourth, planning mission games, there's a bunch of materials there, run down with those. What welcome to. That's basically it. It might be a letter of concern for council, I just wanted to get an information of you all, we need to, we do request a letter of concern.
Yeah, I'm just sad that we are certainly not alone in our concerns. This has come up in the last two problems with different other cities. Those other cities have been directed to compile complaints into a letter, council, yes, governor, regional solutions team. By this, aren't we? So we had a conversation, or an initial conversation. Initially anticipated, we might have a letter ready, but now we've done additional research and it's anyway, it's possible avenues. So we want to make sure that we do our best first before we have a council or a letter about things that may be addressed.
LOC is also in our corner of this, there were the meeting last Friday, we got canceled at the last minute. But nonetheless, another LOC is also in touch.
Any questions of Rick or James on this, please?
Yeah, I do, I'm not sure I'm really following what's happening. I'll summarize and then you can tell me. It sounds like they, they want us to do another code amendment. And and we are worried about not having enough time to do that.
Well, the timing is, is the least of the concerns.
Okay.
The largest concern is how restrictive the new amendment will be, materially restrictive on where new development happen, or even redevelopment happen, or even remodels can happen. There's some triggers there that the new changes, it's just going to be true. So if somebody's house on River View burns down and a new amendment is going to place, their ability to replace that is going to be next to nil.
I think it might be helpful, Rick, if you can explain how the city has become involved in forcing.
And right, so as far as it goes, with the floodplain management, we, we can't issue building permits without doing the, is there a floodplain? Without checking the floodplain boxes, which basically means they either have to do a survey show that they're out of the floodplain, or if they found that they're, they're in the floodplain, and there's additional structure requirements to allow water to flow underneath, flow around, make sure the water doesn't pick up objects in the downstream. Those are extra costs, not only the survey, but also the, the construction costs for those items are protected floodplain. So we, as it seems how we are just a leading community, we have to follow the guidance of FEMA and NFIP.
And if we do not, we can, we risk losing all FEMA funding unfortunately.
And we also risk losing the NFIP program, which means that anybody who lives in the zone and has NFIP insurance, they would lose insurance on the house, which affects mortgages, affects people's ability to get mortgage. Affects their ability to protect their home. And it's about three million dollars worth of coverage that is being offered to our community through the insurance program. But that's kind of sick is not only do we lose any future grant funding for emergencies or for the stuff like the whack, if anything does come through FEMA. They basically, we have a chance in all.
And in general, the cities in order that their places being that did this very quickly, very little input from cities, very little time to have any important work.
Yeah. And this is all regarding public slaughter, and roe fish, which are fish that go from the ocean to the streams. Another concern, and whenever, whenever this, I present this to community members, they do that a lot, but chat a lot about the developers. First thing I always hear out the gate is, we have two reservoirs, no fish ladders. So I mean, those in, and roe fish never make it back up to us anyways. So selling this community is, that's another verb we're going to ask you over this. And when this does go to public hearings, I'm sure we'll be hearing that.
So then my only question would be, how how appropriate is it for the council to be involved versus the planning commission?
The planning commission is, in my view, they want to do the homework for you, and then present to you their findings, their proposals. And then, of course, one of those public hearings, and we do amendment changes to zoning ordinance that has to be by council. But my commission is one who tries to package everything up and present.
Okay, I was just worried about the, you know, we're not really supposed to be involved in anything before they make decisions. Sorry. Regent train my phone on sound.
So for, I, I, I do have something to say, that would be for project initial decision-making process, this is legislative decision-making process.
Okay. Thank you.
Isn't it like fish ladders and all that, under more efficient wildlife and more square service?
So the, so the habitat assessment does center around fishing law or visual, like, yes. So.
So do we work together with them, or?
No, that would be developed. Developer would be the one responsible for producing that document. And even then the person review, reviewing the document and first preparing the document. Their recommendation is they have a bachelor's degree in blah, 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 so it's another similar to an attorney document. It's not something that your average builder will be able to produce, nor is it something here, any of our staff will be able to interpret. So there's that piece of well.
Like extra money?
So since you said, mentioned how much extra money, I want on one, this is, I'm quoting this out of the habitat assessment guide that they produced. This is a quote from FEMA, and says, they can rent applicants to weigh the cost of repairing assessment and mitigation plan. It's what we needed, and it costs locating the project outside of the special floodplain having areas. It may cost less in time and money to simply avoid. That, I think that's a pretty strong message, that can be such a lift to produce. Just having that assessment. One of the two options, we'll have more comments on the second option after this.
Wonderful. Do you have any idea how much already built property overage may be affected by this workplanning zone?
Already built properties, I'm going to guess maybe between thirty, forty houses.
And they're going to say also going to affect land that you're hoping to sell? Okay.
I could have one question I didn't understand was the taking under the Fifth Amendment and require compensation, what is that?
The Fifth Amendment is, you know, government shell, take from the public, or take from a private individual for the benefit of the public without just compensation. So basically, what that means is, is if we use regular, through regulations, we say, you can no longer build here. And that individual has the opportunity, we are tricking that opportunity, the taking of that opportunity is.
You have to provide them compensation.
We have to provide the compensation for that, yes.
And that will come out of the local governments.
Because the local government is the same one initiating the regulatory taking, because we are ordinance.
Yeah.
To prevent some.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions before we move on? All right, moving on to item eleven, business from the city administrator, eleven point one, introduction of new finance director and review of draft employment contract, James?
All right. On second of this, Melody Cornelius was selected by a six member primary panel. It's in myself, and so the brewer, community development director, so it's a to the program council table. Yeah, we're moving to the room for the board, and this more quick, and he said, sorry to find you, and sorry to move from the finance director. We actually had three excellent qualified candidates, five no view government times, and four right to fly after the deadline. That was positive. So after scoring the candidates' application materials and interviews, a primary panel, then you start voting. Determine, I mean, three candidates on scale one by in the story round, are voting, the release received thirty points, third place candidate, twenty-two points, fourth, and eleven points. Run off round, we need to find us. And this was unanimously for the second place candidate, but I said. I put the score sheets, which were anonymous, until they were calculated. So we're very excited about that. Melanie's been a former mayor, and see reporters, and see question. Government time experience. So as per council's previous motion, I have drafted contract. For the review. The background, I'm going to name it. Figures for the salary. It's funny, this is requested, start at seven eight, eight two thousand three hundred twenty-five. Seventy-eight thousand five hundred eighty-five, or six month period, finished time period. And had an increase in step six. Eight thousand five hundred starting March ninth, subject to that factors. Just to give you the background, again, where the figures came from, our former finance director added earning seven nine thousand six hundred thirty-two. Step seven, this will be with, as you, I shouldn't budget it to earn eight three thousand eight hundred and five, or seven eight, starting this past July. Excellent. This suggested. She also pointed out that according to data we compiled for the town hall meeting. Rider, average salary for finance director in Oregon, yes, all works that has been discussed. A hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred pounds as of March first, seventy-three. As we found out, since then, it's all removed. The bar first long, the nearest. Basically, like seeking a motion, group in contract, or financial.
Hear a motion on this?
I move to approve the employment contract for our new finance director, Melody Cornelius. A second.
Right, motion made by councillor Kenyon, a second by councillor Hollitt, any questions of James on this?
Congratulations. My only question was, is, is the salary the only thing that differed from the public seat?
We believe so.
The salaries within the pay table, right?
Yeah.
So I was going to ask the same question, the only reason early that's coming to city council is because severance pays off, right?
There is, yes, yes.
That would be, and, and reading through, that would be the only reason I think this would come before council, because the salary is all within the pay table, but S is the leave and sick accrual.
And yeah, I thought it'd be helpful.
Yeah, that's fine. But, but to confirm it, in my review of it, it sounds like the, the only instance for severance would be if the city terminated Miss Cornelius without cause, is that correct?
Correct.
Or inside the, the dates of renewal?
Correct.
Okay.
This first six months, she's on probation, so without problems, no, so.
And by chance, did the attorney look at this or not? Is it just a template?
I used the template.
Okay. Got it. Any other questions? All right, the motion was to approve the employment contract for our new finance director, Melody Cornelius. Jack, would you go for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Coker? Aye. Mayor Ketchum?
Aye.
Councillor Brewer?
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five, nothing. Welcome aboard, we're happy to have you, and you've been great since you've been the interim, and we're happy to have you here as permanent, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on to eleven point two, that's the proposed new city charter and star voting town hall Saturday, September twenty-first at three P M. Wednesday, October second, and Monday, October twenty-first at six P M, James?
I just wanted to bring this to the folks' attention, that we have the first of three town hall meetings, moving to playing the new, proposing the city charter. So start voting this Saturday, three P M, right here in this room. Two additional town halls, on Wednesday, October second, Monday, October twenty-first, but those are in six P M. Flyers there, lots on the ground, et cetera. We'll also be getting information now, you know, water bills. And do a part of that on both issues. Maybe doing threatening and door stuff to have two thousand five hundred dollars in the current budget for elections. So we're considering hiring empty manager to begin to get out information on both these issues. Since already budgeted. And to ask the council authorization for that, we're just like, I'm thinking is, thinking using around around fifteen hundred for the campaign managers at first. The remaining one thousand or
Any questions, this, our voting? Feature, James is presenting on this, this Saturday, you know?
This Saturday. I'm Kenyon, I'm going to be there, and Sarah Walk will be there. And several of the magic cap. Would it show folks how to navigate the website that's built to the new charter, how to other over each issue, let's see what the charter said, which we charted. So that'd be our thoughts, we're going to have those with knowledge sit up here and.
Will they compare and contrast with the other voting systems that are out there, you know? Corality or rank choice and all the others?
Yeah, we'll definitely address rank choices, that's going to be on the ballot statewide. We make it into some of the issues. Or we may just say, the committee didn't look at other options. Just the one, you like that? I don't want to go down the road, go out of it too much on the other ones, because it's already confusing by itself, but yes, and we.
Yeah, so I took a call yesterday from a gentleman named John Freylander, I think he was one of the two authors of the star voting, what's that?
Yeah, from my.
Yes, he, he saw the article that was published in KLCC and saw my opposition to the process, but, so we just kind of wanted to talk, but apparently he'll be here, he said, I thought he said.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So if anyone knows the system, that guy will. All right. Moving on to eleven point three, other city business and updates. I'm sorry.
One, what's the website for the charter again? Did all that town hall thing?
This is.
Charter dot overage dot city.
And it's, it's H T T P, not H T T S. But if you try that, it's probably, yes.
So my question on the voting is, so ranked voting is being proposed to the state of work? If that passes, um, does that affect overage? Will there be a conflict, I guess, if star voting passes in overage and ranked voting passes for the state?
If they vote, let's say they vote pass already.
Yeah.
Then for, when you're voting for president or U S Senator, whatever, you would be ranked choice. When you're voting for over the city council.
So if ranked voting passes for the state and star voting fails, our current system for the city will stay as it was. And ranked voting will.
No, it would not, so, okay, so if star voting failed, but ranked choice passed, it would be ranked choice for everything, to understand.
Definitely.
Well, you know, I, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that, because I don't know if the initiative statewide is for all races.
Well, maybe have the answer ready for Saturday. People, I'm sure, will be curious about that. Thanks.
All right. Any other updates, James?
Yes, yes, a few here. Okay, we've received a few complaints regarding the size of political. I wanted to give everyone update on that. Though in our zoning code under section twenty-two, point oh-six-two, political sign. Political signs shall not exceed six square feet in area for each candidate for validation. So for those official learners, this, this is one we two go by the foot. Over six square feet, sign was like, obviously, you can read it. You do it different ways, you square, that's, that's the maximum size. There are some lines out there that folks may have seen that are well in access to that. Some are fourteen by eight, but it's just thirty-two square feet, quite big. Question is, and this question is essential to the attorney and making a determination. Again, I'll read that again, political signs shall not exceed six square feet in area for each candidate for validation. There, there are some signs out there that, in my belief, support multiple candidates. Uh, that is my belief, support multiple candidates. So, the question of the city attorney is if there are two candidates on one side, that'd be, you get twelve square feet, three candidates, eighteen square feet. I believe it can certainly be interpreted that way, in my legal opinion. And there's something ambiguous like this, you have to err on the side of caution, in other words, err on the side of speech. Um, so if, if there is signs supporting two candidates, probably get most likely. Um, because again, we don't want a person that has a free speech lawsuit against the city. That's again, the way I'm assuming, that can maybe be read that way. There, they show up and seats six where we inherit it for each and. Said for each sign, and clear. So, but if you are an individual candidate, this says, one candidate, that's your maximum size. And, um, also wanted to point out that we are plain driven, we don't have a code enforcement officer that drives around. Looking through these violations, so we are only acting upon. Let's say coming. Full-time job to have someone go around. And refer all code violations, or that's what I'm like, we're taking on people. Let's see some, maybe not see the others, and people are, of course, get a question, I didn't see that one. So anyway, that's where we're at on that, we should be having an answer to from the city attorney. Uh, Dr. Black went out with this size limit, it's not applied. Each own land or. And within city limits, of course, the county probably has their own. Regulations, but it's on county property, playing to the county. Uh, there's also, for political signs, it's okay to attach them to fences. Because, you know, zoning, uh, it says in all the regulations. Regarding special signs, but political signs are in that section alone. There is a prohibition about attachment signs, that is, but that is for other sign. Political signs, and other signs, they aren't approved, so, then attach a political sign to fence. To six square feet. And for potential for sign, we will find out, that is, that is on that.
Does that mean there's already been, um, something determined for the signs that have one candidate on them?
That's six, six square feet, so, um, we will be sending out, uh, letters. And this, for individual candidates, I can think of two, running, safer, edited.
Sure.
Um, they will be getting letters, and at that point, they will have, once they receive that letter, they will have fifteen days. To appeal to the planning commission, if you do not do so in that time, uh, then the city has the right to take them down.
There's similar limitations placed on traditional business advertising sites?
There is, but, but then.
Thirty-two square feet, the businesses.
I, 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 you may be right. I would not challenge your theory on that, that is, it, it gets complicated.
So does the political candidate can also appeal to the. Planning commission?
Yes, we're, uh, yeah.
And the appeal would be to have an oversight sign, is that what the, what appeal would be?
This question, you have a little property owner, that building company that received it. Welcome, we'll give a presentation from the city, that's around that.
Yes.
Yes, the code actually says the deal goes to, uh. It's not the planning commission.
Still the vision, which we discuss.
Thank you.
Um. Since we do not have a city building inspector, or we won't see, what we do, they weren't here, uh, correctly. Okay, so the biggest concern is, let's say, we're not talking political signs, let's say we're talking about signs attached to buildings requiring good information. As this is written, if our building official or those local officials says, hey, business owner, your, your sign is. It need reconstructed, it's not right, it's not up to building code. That is problematic, we appeal to anybody that is not a building official, so those appeals really should go to the state of Oregon. Not to this planning commission and not to city council because of the special knowledge of building codes. Now, if the sign, if, if the appeal was regarding, um, it's a sign that is not a building sign, not attached to a building, but it does not require building. Permit, now it is appropriate for that appeal to go to planning commission and then, if need be, to city council. But anything that is built, that requires a building permit for safety and, uh, health and life safety, it's not appropriate for those appeals to go to planning. Going back to the city building inspector issue, so, so yes, we have some, if contracted that work out, from West Code. But, um, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure in our contract, then, we can also include. The daily expecting. But it's on. They expect anything that requires a permit, so if signs not require building permit, we're, uh, then they're unable, they have no point in checking for it, plus. There's not there. Of the review. It's like, all to two, okay, not over those codes, it would be the city building inspector. Playing.
Which would be rich, right?
Well, reality, um, when we go through our code amendments, that's one of the things that's flagged to be changed to. Be more clear, because if it's something that, um. If it's an appeal on a building amendment, you go to state, and that's in O R S's, but if it's appealed to for planning decision, then that's the local, the local process. So, um, I do that, like, you change when we go through a easier project. Any more questions, man? I have two more. Uh, last week, the bathrooms at, um, Diamond Union Park were vandalized extensively. Forcing us to, yeah, close a lot of those bathrooms temporarily, I would hope they haven't reopened yet. I. Doing what we can, that is investigated.
Okay, damage.
Throw things off the wall, the soap dispensers and towel things. Hopefully could. Not as bad as the San Francisco, they actually done in the ground. So. There was damage nonetheless. Uh, just wanted to point that out. Uh, I also wanted, wanted to counsel, and remember a couple of months ago, you asked me to, uh. Have the finance director, see, and try to begin investigation about overtime payments. Uh, that is, I now assign that to Melody Cornelius as the finance director, I was lucky to do so until we had a full-time finance director, it's about to be inappropriate. For temporary, really, investigating city employees, with that being on the hiring. And, but that is now starting. And that's it.
There's no camera in that bathroom in front of you?
There it is, uh, unfortunately, you can't have a camera inside the bathroom and on the outside, so we, we've identified three potential suspects, because we don't know what time.
Yeah, it could.
Perfect, police service.
Any else, James? Alright, uh, nothing was in route consent agenda, we have no ordinances or resolutions to deal with tonight. No public hearings, uh, down to item fifteen, uh, department staff board committee commission reports, fifteen point one, finance report. Melody, anything to preliminate or preliminary, talk about her?
Um, I think everyone received the report from last week, um, it does include payroll before June. Uh, since then, we have entered, uh, the line of events, some of it's all funded as of May, although I didn't send out a new report, I'm, I'm, we have the last week. Um, and reconciliations are, uh, we. Got through May, June is going much smoother, we expect the all month's need. Our utility.
Please.
Um, you just mentioned payroll from June in this report, should, shouldn't that be on the prior fiscal year?
Uh, well, it's payroll, I have that, uh. Long in June, this April, July, so I entered July this, because it's within, within this fiscal year. The hours are from June, though, so, it's, sorry, it's interchangeable, um, it's June payroll, so those hours that were accumulated in June, but April, July, on one. All the years, July.
And so that's how it normally works every year, so we're, we're almost on it on twelve, okay?
It's how it has worked, money is, is going in or out after July first, it is for that fiscal year, we can't do that. Since the money, not the hours. Okay.
Okay, and then I have one other question is, um, do you know when we might be able to start the audit?
Um, that's an excellent question, I'd like to start that, uh, very soon. Been waiting for, um, the reconciliations to be complete through the end of last fiscal year, once that's done, um, we have everything set aside. Um, I believe that she said she was ready early for us, so I'll be calling her soon to bring it so we can, uh, from last fiscal year.
You think that's like in a few weeks or months or?
We should be caught up, I'd say, on there, who's got it, and so.
Great.
At the last fiscal year, yes.
Thank you.
And then we should be able to, if that's.
Thank you.
That's all, did you have a question?
No, comes answered, thank you.
Melody said, probably next session, next time that we have, you, then the finance report, we will be able to get last fiscal year's closeout.
Closeout, yes, audit, no.
Yeah, just so we know kinda where it's at.
One more clarifying question, so, um, from what I just heard, does that mean that. We're almost all completely cut off with all of our reconciliations?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, moving on to fifteen point two, that's a police report, that's Michael or?
I have actually been asked, uh, to take this, uh, certain question is available and answer questions, which not even too well, so. Okay, the three overview, the police department, one of August, uh, responded to forty incidents required. Free content laws, by arrests. Issue thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. Prejudice. Still have, uh, officer in the academy. Officer, our, our, and, 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 like they had to train. Department, I couldn't train. Also that, it's word prosecutor, judge, discuss, um, cert warrants. Um, move forward with some of those. Ministry of Warrants, in other words. On homeowners who have no violation, they have not addressed, sitting now as we, they entered the property. You know, pay those, if the, the certain warrant is, so. So moving on that. Um, lots of results are, actual report, any follow-up questions? So, so I can't do anything. Questions?
So I was looking at your, the reports, you could probably answer this, James, there was several, uh, report of noxious growth. So if you get that report, what's the next action for the officer?
Uh, so the officer will try to get in contact with the homeowner. If they ignore us, or if they can, and, and, look, look up the property, and then, uh, a letter. To think that the next, now, they've created a situation where we decided, officers also voted with, called the door knocker, on their door. That's somewhat successful, but we have found that a lot of people claim that they've never got it. The officer takes picture on the door, et cetera, and somehow blew off by them, um, so. So do that, give them some time, still don't respond, or we issued them a citation, they didn't come to court with rest in. And the next step is these administrative warrants, where we, from bring all our evidence to the judge and say, set this letter, put the story off, did this. So we tried, we didn't respond, we were now asking for a warrant to be able to go onto their property, have the grass, what needs to happen, and then bill the homeowner for that, if they don't pay. For two, um, questions or, um, projects.
Thank you. Any other questions for police? Uh, fifteen point three fire E M S report, Chief Hall.
I'll just point out a, a few highlights on here, uh, we restarted our program this year. Had a very successful program that lasted probably five or six years, but we didn't have. Someone that was interested in coordinating that position, but we can now, maybe according to taking that on. We just brought on seven new high school students, they're sixteen to eighteen years old. Go through a full fire academy. Um, you have a, you know, safety plan in place for them, so that we're following OSHA and, uh, holy rules. And, um, also happy to report that we just started our fire cutter one academy with nineteen people, academy, that's huge. Um, our tech free engine is almost ready to be put in service, we just need to have our apparatus operators get to the training on it. Uh, update in the hiring process, we did receive. New applications for fire fighter paramedic position, and we will be doing the testing process next week. So hopefully that will. I'll say hard for the time budget, we've been, um, following. Running nurses with three full-time staff people, the last two months, two, three months, and, uh. Retired, or, or they should do something else. Um. We do have, uh, some additional apartment staff that are starting. We received seventy-five thousand, or, sorry, seventy-five hundred dollars for E M S supplies, using a community shares program. Um, and that, for rent, from use every six months, so it just helps us buy E M S supplies. Um, and then also, a program that goes along, what's that, it's called Pulse Point. And what that does is you have an app on your phone, it'll pop up if there's a cardiac arrest nearby, so bystanders can go and. Start CPR before we can arrive on scene, so I get some early CPR intervention, hopefully that, we can fix the bugs that are happening, that's that, and we can get that going. Um. And then, um, our call stats, just wanted to point out that, um, our call lines, uh, currently subsequently, we're about forty calls ahead of last year this time. That's. It's just busy. Nobody has any question from that.
Thanks, Steve, and of course, Captain.
Yeah, so the Pulse Point is an app that, um, citizens, preferably with CPR certification. Can put on their phones and they'll just get notified if there's someone near where their bone is located.
Yes. Yes, um, geographical, so even if you were in Eugene and there was a cardiac arrest nearby, it would activate on its own.
That's great. If it works.
Yeah, if it works. Problem is our dispatch, so those are sent out through Central Rainy. Which receives the nine-one-one calls, but then they're transferred to Lake County Sheriff's Office, and so the issue is between those.
Lost, lost in translation, yeah. Chief, of the, of the nineteen folks in the class, are, are they all Oak Ridge folks, or they, are you, we got people kind of from along the corridor?
Uh, I believe seventeen of them are Brookridge, Haysville, Westford area. We do have two people that live in Eugene.
Great.
Um, some of them have been volunteers for a while, but have not been through the fire.
Okay, thanks. You have questions for Fire Department? Okay. Fifteen point four is the Public Works Report, Rick, is that you?
Yes. The month of August, uh, Public Works distributed, uh, twenty-four point one million gallons of water, treated six point six million gallons of wastewater, uh, forty-one service orders, went back to the case. No wastewater repairs, two small leaks, uh, water leaks, and also performed, uh, tasks of the crew, taking brush and weed basement on city properties, rightways, paint, frogs, lock, no. And no parking zones, as well as striping, vehicle makers repair, training of new hires, Jake Newer and Mike Stoffel, both are pretty, I'm doing very well. Uh, red water meter, and other legal accounts perform some unit repairs of those big sizes, were shared off in health vendors. And replaced the doggy box being on the park, and sent, uh, thousands, how are you, just, pull from where see you, do you require certification?
Any questions? Mike's a veteran, right, coming back for round two? Very good, very good. Very good, very good.
He was, uh, he was through people right now.
Yeah, yeah, great. Uh, did someone run over the firefighting in South Manhattan? All right. Uh, moving on to item sixteen, that's the executive session, so, um. Where the council will retire to the conference room, go into executive session, then, uh, we will come back. And go back into public session in the event there are any motions to be made as a result of the executive session, but. I'd like to read the citation, the executive session is under O R S one nine two six six zero two A. You consider the employment of an officer, employee, staff, member, or agent. Um. It will be there short time, I don't know how long that'll be, but, um, anyway, we'll come back if anyone's still hanging around by that time, is, uh. That is really the last item other than public, so.
Um, Melody, can you pause the reporting from that one? That's.
All right, so all set, James?
Yes.
All right, moving back into a regular session at seven sixteen P M. Um. Are there any motions resulting from the executive session to be made?
Yes. I move to approve hiring Keller Williams as the city's realtor of record and authorize the city administrator to sign the necessary contracts. I'll second that.
All right, motion was made by Council Hollitt and second by Council Kenyon. Any, uh, discussion on this motion by any counselors? Okay. Hearing none, um, the motion was to approve hiring Keller Williams as the city's realtor of record and authorize the city administrator to sign the necessary contracts. Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Ketchen.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
All right, motion passes five zero. Um. Moving on to item seventeen, that's public comment, any public comment in the room? Any public comment online? When heard. Uh, before we adjourn, I'd just like to, uh, thank, uh, Nat and Josh for, uh, coming in today. And congratulations on, uh, pitching in to help the city of Oak Ridge in their realty.
Thank you very much.
Right, so here, motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned at seven eighteen.